And physically adding space is going to be way bigger number.
Yes.
But I do understand, like, we don't want to put anything in and then take anything out. Yes?
I think it's important to point out that some of the changes in Phase One, or the upgrades or improvements, whatever you want to call them, are predicated on Phase Two.
Yes.
You know, if we're going to be putting in ceiling fans, painting the ceiling, painting the walls, and then we're talking about knocking down walls, we're going to have to start over with painting and all those things that we would have accomplished in Phase One. So, do we want to continue to move forward with Phase One? Or do we want to take a step back?
I mean, I think from what we've heard from Phase One, just the little bit that we've talked about, and then we find out how bad the insulation is in this room and things like that. I think, you know, if it does come down to an expansion, it's going to be in the out years. I mean, it's not going to happen next year.
No.
It's not going to happen that fast. It's going to be a major budget item and a major capital improvement project. So maybe we could, Mitchell, maybe you could look back through the plans, and then we can have an agenda item and really drill down on it.
Yeah, I would create to move forward with.
Yeah. Because if we don't do Phase Two next summer, we could probably do it the next summer. The problem is, when, if we do anything, this room is not available for anybody to use it. And that incurs another expense. So. Okay?
All right. So we have our marching orders for the next agenda.
I have one question. I don't know if it was discussed when we did IT. Is there any IT budget item for new tablets for the city council members?
Well, they had a request for their usual budget. We scraped together $51,000 left. Go ahead, Brad, come on in. But we have $51,000 in the budget. He had asked for another $24,000 that is not there yet. He's looking to scrape over money from this year. So what he has in mind for doing, I cannot say. So Brad? Put you on the spot.
Brad, UDI manager. The tablets for council are part of our four-year replacement cycle. And I believe that they turn for, at the end of this fiscal year. So they are part of the plan for equipment replacement next year.
So like in October?
The order in October and however long it takes us to.
October is second.
However long it takes us to get them here and configure them. So we'll do our best.
We have Dalton up there.
To be accurate.
At 12:00 AM.
Okay, good.
I guess we're getting the sense that these tablets need to get replaced ASAP.
We need something more functional. I just don't find this very functional. I just don't. So.
What do you mean by that? You don't find it functional?
I only use it for this. Like, if I have to do something other than, you know, read emails or look at the agenda, it's just, it's not as functional as I would prefer. Like, if I have to type a Word document or something like that, I don't use this.
It's not.
No, I wouldn't either.
It's not user-friendly.
It's not that user-friendly either.
But it's a tablet.
It is.
If I have to create a document, a spreadsheet, I'm much more comfortable with my full-size keyboard that I have on my own laptop and things like that, that I can then put on this or whatever. But I don't know that that's what I expect this to be for.
I just know the new surfaces and all, you know, they've changed drastically from this.
I always just run into technical issues with mine. When I bring it in here and IT touches it and it goes on and it works just fine. It's like, oh, then, after I struggled all weekend, it's like, okay.
Okay, as long as we're in the replacement cycle, I'm happy with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Is there anything else that you would like to discuss on the budget?
Nope.
And if not, I want to thank you very much for taking into consideration my needs. I didn't mean to ask you not to take a break, though. I wanted to make that really clear.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Say goodbye and thank you.
Thank you so much.
Take safe travels. Okay, next we have discussion of temporary event signage.
Good afternoon now. Lisa Han, an interim zoning official. This came before us last fall, I believe it was, when the temporary promotional events for, say, the yacht club and country clubs, Twin Isles or St. Andrews, when the new regulations were taken into consideration, I don't think it was thought of that these areas or these entities had charitable events that go on for more than three or four days. So we had an issue with the yacht club and the leukemia cup activities. And they're allowed eight temporary promotional events per year. They can last up to seven days. But they are limited in signage to two signs up to 32 square feet. They have several sponsors. They like to put banners up on their property. But to, if they're viewed from the public right-of-way, they would be limited to the few signs, no more than 32 square feet in area. They've written us a letter requesting this be brought back to council to see if there would be any additional considerations with changing the regulations for the temporary promotional events. One idea that has crossed our minds is if they would go through the special event permitting process for the events that happen on their property, just like we have in the parks and at City Marketplace. They have numerous signs on that private property for special events. We could certainly treat it that way. Usually special events are only two- to three-day events. But if it's listed in the application, we could take all that into consideration.
So that would basically be a process where they could go and show you what they're planning to put up?
Correct.
And then that would be staff approval? Or that would have to come to council?
No, it would be, right now, that would be staff and DRC approval.
Okay. I think that's a fair compromise.
We do have representatives here. If you wanted to hear from them regarding the issue.
I was going to say good morning, but actually, good afternoon now. I'm Jake Dye. I'm with the Isles Yacht Club, and I'm the chairman of the Leukemia Cup series of events. The Isles Yacht Club puts on Leukemia Cup every year. We've been doing it for 13 years. We raise anywhere from $50,000 to $70,000 a year with these events. Every penny of it goes to Leukemia and Lymphoma Society for the fight against blood cancers. Unlike some places where they have a leukemia cup and it's one big sailing regatta and they raise hundreds of thousands of dollars. We don't have that kind of market here. So for us to raise any kind of money, we've had to be creative and create a number of different events. So we have a large boat PRHF regatta. We have a small boat, One Design Regatta. We have model sailboat regatta, tennis tournament, bocce tournament, billiards tournament, pickle tournament, pickleball tournament, barbecue bash, and Team Punta Gorda very generously contributes half of what they bring in from Pedal and Play to the Leukemia Cup as well. All of our events are open to the public. And generally, they run over a two-to-three-week period of time. All of our events, except for a couple, are held on the Isles Yacht Club property. Pickleball is a new tournament this year. And that'll be, we think, South County Park. And the sailboat, model sailboat regatta is out at South County Park as well. Eighty percent of our contributions every year come from corporate and private donors. And they're selfless in their giving. The existing signage code that has been referred to allows us two 4x4 signs total for the support of these events. Our corporate sponsors, and we have many of them, not just a few, but we had seven corporate sponsors, eight corporate sponsors last year that qualified for signs. We already have almost half of that this year, and we don't start until March. So we'll have a larger requirement for those signs. We believe that the code that affects that right now really wasn't designed to work against us. It just never thought of charity events that we have that are going on right now. So we would like to be able to have corporate signs and banners to support our corporate sponsors. We'd like to let the community to know, we'd like them to know who the corporate leaders are. They're stepping forward, supporting events like this. And we'd like to create an exciting tournament environment. If you go to any other major event anywhere, you have lots of ceremony associated with it. And you've got flags and banners, and it's exciting. And we have to create that to get the best tennis players, the best billiards teams from locally. We need to create that to make this something more than just another day of tennis in the community. It has to be something special. We want to use banners, feather flags, signs, et cetera. We want to be able to display them on our property, on our tennis court fences. We like to put them on cars and trucks. For example, Gettle makes a contribution. They would love to have a car parked with a Gettle sign on it. And we'd like to have that in the parking lot as well. The Leukemia Cup is all about fighting blood cancers. We keep none of the money. It all goes to charity. We do this every year. We've been very successful over the years because the community comes together and supports us with our events. We think it's very important that those who step forward to support us should be recognized. And it also helps us encourage more sponsorship in the future. So thank you very much. And a special thanks to Lisa, who's been carrying the bulk of this for some time. She's been very helpful to us as we move forward. Subject to your questions.
Thank you. Yes?
I just want to make a comment that not only does this raise a wonderful amount of revenue for the Leukemia Cup and inspire a lot of volunteerism within this particular yacht club. The Twin Isles also has a similar event, although not quite as elaborate, for the Shoes for Kids with their tennis group there. But this attracts people from all over, not just Punta Gorda. Particularly in the tennis group that I've played with, but I'm not one of the better players. You've got people coming really from all south, all over southwest Florida to participate. And I think that's one reason why the sponsors also get a certain value from their support, too. So I think this is a very fine organization. And I hope as a council, we can support it wholeheartedly.
I think the pathway that Lisa said is best because then you can just design it exactly the way you want to. You don't have to get into minutia of what they're doing. I think they can just present the event as they wish to present it.
Yes, it would require the event application. And they can put all the events for that specific Leukemia Cup on the application, the dates, and how things are going to be set up on their property. And we can take a look at it and take it to DRC.
Is there a fee for that?
It's a $50 application fee.
And that would include all the variety of events that they, I mean, they're hosting lots of different events. Because I know, I was the ride director for Pedal and Play. And we had a sponsor banner. And we didn't get permission, but we printed, we did it anyway. And we had a.
Yeah. You didn't get turned in.
I didn't get turned in. But we put a sponsor banner up and hung it from the pavilion at Lashley Park. And we hung it up at 5:30 in the morning, or 6 o'clock in the morning. And by 2:00 in the afternoon, it was down. And so, but, you know, we did that. I see the Chamber. The Chamber has their Partners in Action program. And they've got this big PVC pipe that they have a big, huge banner with all of their, that they put out at breakfast and lunches and their after-hours. And it goes with them all over the place that's advertising. And they put it out, and then they take it down. So I'm trying to process this myself and what this request is and how, because I think, you know, there could be ways to do this that are kind of easy to address.
The issue is they didn't take it down.
We had, we've done this in the past, too. We've always had banners out. And everybody does this. Problem was, we, someone reported it as a code violation. And so the city has no choice but to follow the code. Armed now, armed with what the code is, we have no choice but to follow the, you know, the city's code. And so that being the case, that's what we're requesting. Give us the opportunity to do what we've always done. We put them up for a while, and then we take them down. But we created an environment that we think is helpful to the charity and it's good for the community as well. The requirement to complete a permit application for all of these events is not that hard. We know what our events are. We know where they're going to be. We know, you know, what we're going to want to do. So we can do that. But we just need the ability to be able to design the kind of events that help us.
And to address Nancy's concern, when you had Pedal and Play, that was an event permit. So your signage is included, your signage in the park, at the pavilions, that's included in.
Okay.
The only signage you would have to ask for would be off-premise directional signage, if you had the little directional signs coming in. But we don't regulate the signs when it's inside the park. That's considered as part of your event.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you for the clarification.
You were legal.
I was legal after all. Darn, I was going to go.
So we're all agreeing that this will work? The special event, yeah?
Okay, cool.
Yes.
Great.
I move that we accept the recommendation.
Okay. Do we need consensus, or do we need to do anything? We made a motion.
If I could get, let's have backup. Will this require any form of change in the ordinance?
No.
How come?
Because we'll regulate it under the special event application. Special event application for any events on private or public property, we can do that. The special events include that.
All right, well, let's have an official vote notwithstanding.
Lynn?
Just for clarification, this, we're just approving it for the Leukemia Cup events, correct?
No.
No, this would be for any other entity that want, like the Twin Isles, Country Club, St. Andrews. If they came in with a special event application, they would be able to do the same thing, some type of promotion. Now, they're going to be limited to the signs being on their property, not off-premise directional signs, not off-premise, not out on Marion or Jamaica Way. They would have to be on their property.
Okay, I understand that. But my question was really, so if we say we are approving the on-premise signage for special events, in this particular case, this is specifically just for their Leukemia Cup events. If they were to have another event three months later, they would have to get another special event permit?
Yes, that is correct.
That was, Mike, that was where I was going with.
Okay, yes, that is correct.
Yeah, okay.
So we don't really need to take action, per se. Aren't they just applying for a permit? I wouldn't think we have to do anything.
Well, apparently, we have been treating this type of thing as a special event in the past. So I think the action would be to confirm the, our zoning department's interpretation that would allow this.
So Gary made a motion. Did somebody second?
I'll second.
Okay, second, we have a motion, second to approve the special event process for private property. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Carry unanimously. Yep. All right, next, recommendation from city officers, Howard.
So we have the budget discussion, not to exceed Melrose rate, and the assessments on July 12th, which is next Wednesday, remember. Next Wednesday. And we're also going to include on there, as of today, a discussion regarding city center land development regulations regarding height and flexibility. So that, depending on how the conversation goes, if you want us to revise some of our land development regulations, we can start working on it in your break.
What else? That's it? City attorney?
All right, nothing further, thank you.
City clerk?
Okay. Boards and committees, under vacancies, we have two unexpired terms on the Board of Zoning Appeals, one for a regular seat and one for an alternate. We have a three-year term on the Planning Commission and an unexpired term on the Utility Advisory Board. Under nominations, we have, let's see, one unexpired term on the Board of Zoning Appeals. We have two eligible applicants for nomination.
Do we have a motion to nominate?
Nominate both.
No motion needed there, just the nomination, thank you. Okay, also under nominations, we have a three-year term as an alternate on the Building Board. We have one eligible applicant. If you'd like to nominate and appoint, I would need a motion for that.
Nominate and appoint?
Second.
Mr. Haynes, nominate and appoint to the Building Board alternate. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carry unanimously.
For the Burnstour Isles Canal Advisory Committee vacancy nomination, I had forwarded to you a late submission application for Mr. Four. He had contacted me on Monday, and I asked him to submit the application by the end of day on Monday, so I could forward that to you in time. He did reply that he did not have time to do that. But I got it yesterday morning. So I forwarded it to you. Council has taken late submissions for nominations in the past. And if you just nominate the two eligible applicants at this time, you'll have some time to look over his resume.
Okay. Nominate both.
Thank you. Lastly, under nominations, we have an unexpired term on the Punta Gorda Isles Canal Advisory Committee. And we do just have one eligible applicant. If you'd like to nominate and appoint, I need a motion.
I nominate and appoint.
Did the second person pull their name?
I'm sorry?
Punta Gorda Isles, did you say?
This is for Punta Gorda Isles.
There's two names listed on the roster, on the agenda.
Oh, I apologize. Yes, we have Jake Dye and Timothy Sullivan.
Nominate all.
Okay.
Nominate all.
Councilmember Pravky?
Yes.
Thank you. I apologize for the confusion. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, policy and legislation. I have one item I would like to bring up, right? One, do you have anything else?
Yeah.
We're perpetuating fake news here that the city of Punta Gorda is in the search for a city manager, which we are not. But it was kind of good timing that this article came out that the city is not in a search for a city manager. And it's been my understanding and talking with Howard that he is willing and ready and able to stay on after he retires from the drop program as a contract employee. And if we so choose that, then we could have the city attorney and finance has already been looking at it, and personnel, make sure that we come up with the right type of contract and the term. And it's not anything urgent because your retirement date is June 1.
May 1.
May 1, 2018.
No, I thought it was June. I guess it's May.
So we have some time. But if it's the will of this, the wish of this council, I would like to move that forward so we can get it done. Gary?
I think we need a public statement first that Howard does exactly what you, has the same consensus that you just expressed.
If council wants to, for a specified time, we would work out a contract for a specified time.
Then I think we need to be able to have time to consider, what is that specified time?
Sure.
Well, it's, I wouldn't, it wouldn't be ethical for me to say one month. That's ridiculous. So if we're talking about finishing up some projects, you know, like the, all the sales tax projects.
Like a few years.
We're talking a couple of years.
Yes.
A couple of years.
Few years, yes.
In perpetuity.
No, 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 no. No, no, no. But it would be for a very specified amount of time. And we can talk about it. But it's better to do it sooner than later.
Yes, I agree.
Yeah, because otherwise, we have to go into a major shuttle move to try to interview people and review resumes and do that whole process, which takes a lot of time.
Right.
There will be a lot of people who would be interested working in the city of Punta Gorda. So you will have no problem getting another city manager.
When the time comes.
Yes, but we're not interested right now.
We're not ready for that.
So are we in agreement that we would like that to move forward?
I'm getting that consensus, yeah.
I would like that. Absolutely.
Okay.
Draw up the paperwork. We're going to need some legal paperwork sometime. Okay. I think that's all that I have.
Yeah, I don't have anything.
Okay, council member comments? We'll go with JaHa.
Nothing.
Lynn?
Just two quick things. It was brought to my attention that the new 711 that's being built on 41 has a, its back wall is to the street, and it's going to be a very ugly eyesore. So it was, someone suggested that we recommend to the mural society that be a new location for a mural. So that may be something we'd like to consider. And secondly, I've had the pleasure of attending both the Planning Commission and the BZA meetings last week. And it came to my attention, from going to the BZA meeting, that they're having a very difficult time keeping people on that committee. I don't know the reason why. But there seems to be an ongoing issue with that. And I mentioned to Howard when I met with him the other day, the city of Northport has a combined building, excuse me, planning and zoning board. And we may wish to consider at some point looking into the legalities of that. I don't know if we have specific rules that make us have the two separate committees. We may want to consider molding those two committees together at some point in the future.
Yeah, there's like a dual office holding restriction. And whether or not it would be applicable to that situation or not, I'd have to take a look at it. But I'm not a huge fan of the Attorney General's opinions on dual office holding restrictions.
I just noticed that the city of Northport has a combined planning and zoning board. And I thought maybe we want to look into that, just as, you know, an opportunity.
We could do that.
They really are having a major problem keeping people on the BZA for some odd reason. So there's almost all new people on that board, and there's a lot of vacancies right now. That's all I have. I forgot to tell you that I'm representing you all on the Founder's Day Planning Committee for this year. So we have a meeting tomorrow. And we have been asked, the Founder's Day, for those who might not be familiar, is the first week in December, from December 1 through 7. It was started by the Punta Gorda History Center. And it's all nonprofits, including the city, participate. And it's, anyone can host an event and can raise funds for their nonprofit, but it celebrates the history of our city. So for two years in a row, we had city council leading tours here. And the tours have been diminishing in attendance. So Mikhail and I talked about it and decided that perhaps we don't want to have an offer up a tour of the city again. But what we might want to do, Ray seems interested in this, is having tours of the fire station just for the mural. So that it's, people can come and see the mural and hear about the mural and have a couple of designated times, so it's not disruptive to the fire station. And maybe a time that children can come. So we talked about that. And so I think that that's something we'll offer up to the committee. And just to let you know, it looks like two weeks from tomorrow is the grand opening of the, what's the grand opening? The opening of the Punta Gorda, the Burnstour Isles Publix. So I've been told by Kite Realty, July 20th is what Publix is telling them. So I'm on pins and needles, waiting for that to open. And while we're on break, Howard and I are going to be talking to another business about annexation. And so we're continuing to beat the annexation drum. And if so, this one annexes, it'll put them across the street from some property that's owned by some people with the last name of Keesling. So there may be more annexation possibly that could be in the future. So we're going to work on it, right, Howard? And see where we go.
Yeah.
So.
How long these take?
These take a long time.
Gary?
I just want to say that I'm going to miss the comments that somebody else would make it right after we talk. I wish him well, and say goodbye to Ray. Thank you.
Citizens' comments, any topic, please make your way to this podium, state your name. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Harvey Goldberg, city of Punta Gorda. You made two, I think, outstanding decisions today, one on the assisted living center. You've taken a major step to ensuring, securing the quality of life for many people who moved from where we are right now in our stage of life to being, to needing assistance before they move maybe to the next stage. So congratulations. I know many of these people in the community who have not spoken, the silent majority are, are going to be, rest assured of, of their future. And I think you've made another excellent decision for the future of the city by extending a contract for our wonderful city manager, who's been, I think, one of the best city managers, not the best, that this city has ever seen. And thank you very much, congratulations on that.
Thank you. Citizens' comments, any topic? Take the podium if you'd like to comment. Seeing none, we are adjourned.